We'll call this meeting of the October fourteenth Board of Directors of the Pullman School District to order. The first order of business as always is our flag salute. And we will ask again, Dr. Maxwell, as you're there with the flag, to please lead the salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the requiem which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next order of business is the approval of our agenda this evening. Are there any additions, revisions?
Just a couple of updates to make the board aware of. The stages of reopening document and executive summary were added to the, as a discussion item. And policy procedure revisions were made in thirty-one twenty-two. Excused and unexcused, and they were just grammatical in nature. Those are the updates.
Alrighty, so I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as updated.
I'm gonna move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Jim. It's been moved to second that we do approve the agenda as updated this evening. All those in favor, please signify with a thumbs up. Any opposed? Speak out, please. Alright, thank you. So the agenda has been approved. Next on the agenda is the reports correspondence and programs. So we'll start with Nathan. Do you have anything you would like to report on this evening?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Amanda, you have anything?
No report, thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Allison?
Sure, I'll just briefly share that I attended a meeting of the Parent Resource Partnership Group that meets a few times per year. I've always meant to go to one of these meetings and the time never seemed to work out for me, but Zoom made that happen, so yay. The meeting was very well attended, I thought. I don't know how many they would normally have in person, but there were about at least ten parents, I think, there. And a few staff members, and they discussed academic and behavior supports for online learners that I thought was fascinating, and there was kind of a Q and A time. And at the end, the, the parents provided suggestions for future meeting topics. The parents seemed interested in learning about transitions, like to the next grade or the next school, or even to life after graduation. So I thought it was a really great group, and kudos to the district for this opportunity that's presented. And by the way, the knowledge that they shared this academic supports for online learners, it would be perfect for any, not just students with IEPs and 504s, but really for any students. I thought it was just really good advice, so.
Great. Maybe we can get some of that up on the website or something to help parents during this time of their lives. Be a good idea. Okay, Dr. Everman, it's your turn.
Yeah, I just wanted to report that I attended the Public Health Officers Meeting with the Staff. It was last week, and it was well attended. Dr. Maxwell was in attendance as well. Troy answered a lot of questions, and he just gave an update on the COVID situation in Whitman County and the state. And I thought he did a real good job. And there were a few questions, but what I liked about it was the attendance. There was a lot of attendees, so.
That's good to hear. Thank you, Jim. And do I have a report? No report for this evening. So we'll start, we'll go on to the superintendent's report, please. That would be you, Dr. Maxwell.
Thank you, Susan, and I want to say appreciate Dr. Everman, and I know Amanda was also on the Zoom with Troy Anderson from the Whitman County Department of Health, who did a presentation for all of our staff. And so it was very well attended and some really good information to share. Just a quick update, our two active construction projects continue to move forward. That's the expansion and renovation of Lincoln Middle School is still on time. Hopefully, we'll be getting more of the trusses in place. Also, they finally started moving dirt at the Whitman County Transportation Cooperative out on Albion Road. And so that looked really good the other day when I went out and checked on that project. So we're making progress. So again, we appreciate the community's support on those two projects, which are very much needed. My other item tonight is you may or may not have noticed that in the personnel report, Lori Cochran retired, one of our longtime bus drivers. So I just wanted to give a little shout out, because we did not have the opportunity this past spring to recognize her. And I just wanted to share not only our thanks for her many years of service, but I thought I'd share just a couple fun facts. Lori started in nineteen seventy-four driving for us. That was before there was even any qualifying state test to drive a school bus. She drove all buses with center transmissions, and she outlasted five buses. Her first route was a suburban, and one of the routes, she used to go all the way down to Boyer to pick up a student. So again, that's quite a drive if you've ever been on that road. We estimate, based on some, some quick calculations, that she transported in her forty-five-plus years of service sixty thousand students, and probably drove at least a million miles. So again, just want to send out my gratitude to Lori and wish her all the best in retirement.
Wow. Wow. She was driving buses longer than my kids have been alive. And my, my kid was born in seventy-five. Wow, that is impressive. I'm impressed.
Bob, do you send out a letter to the retirees, or would you do that for her? Would you do that on our behalf?
I sure can send. I'll send her a little card on behalf. I think we send a little letter, but I'm happy to send a card as well.
With all those stats he just gave, over a million miles and sixty thousand children, yeah.
That's amazing.
That's back and forth trips, that rough account for you.
Every trip is round trip, right?
Yep, one hopes.
You don't want a one-way trip. Emphasize that in the note.
Yeah. Perfect.
I will send a card on behalf of the board for you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, anything else, Bob?
That concludes my report tonight, since we have a pretty packed agenda, so.
Okay. So this is one of the better ones. I'm so sad that the kids can't be in person, but we have a Jefferson showcase, and that would be by principal of Jefferson Elementary School, Jim Bruce.
Good evening, Susan. Thank you, Board, for allowing me to come in and, and take a few minutes just to give some highlights about Jefferson Elementary School this year. I'd like to just really begin by acknowledging the outstanding work that our, our entire staff at Jefferson has done this year in some very trying times. Our teachers have, have just done unbelievable work in developing lessons, in reaching out to students, getting students engaged in the lessons that they're teaching, while trying to stay as aligned to the standards as, as they possibly can, given this situation that we're in. Supporting them as our, our classified staff members. And again, they've just been right there, supporting the teachers, supporting the students in their work as well. Not to be forgotten, as our, our front office staff, being able to field the, the breadth of phone calls and questions and be able to put some parents' minds at ease during these very trying times. And then we're really concerned, obviously, with the, the safety of the building and our custodial staff. They have just continued to do an exceptional job, making sure that our building is, is not only clean, but is, is sanitized regularly throughout the day, and then also in the evening as well. But also, not, not only just want to talk or acknowledge staff, but want to talk about our, our parents and our families just have been so supportive this year and have had nothing but really positive feedback from, from the parents and, and grandparents and, and other relatives, that just the, the way their child or their children's teachers, teacher or teachers have, have reached out and, and have started to really establish those, those relationships with, with their, their child as well. And of course, not to be forgotten in all of this is our, our students. And we, like Susan said, we wish we were there with you, with them in person, and, and we hope that we will be back in that, in that arena soon, and, and we will be. And so the students have worked really hard to be able to, to do the very best that they can, given the situation as well. We realize that, that nothing really replaces the in-person instruction and the ability to connect with friends and to connect with their teachers and, and other staff members. But, but through some innovative ways, we're able to at least bridge that gap right now. Couple of, of shout-outs as well is we have, for the last couple of weeks, we've started serving our ELD students, and they are coming in four days a week, but in two-day types of models. And so that's been really nice to get our, our English as a Second Language students into the building and be able to, to work with them and, and really give them an extra opportunity. Prior to that, and still continuing, our students with disabilities, who are coming in on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and we have an AM session and a PM session, and they're getting that additional support that they need as well. And then that's really kind of it for, or what's happening at Jefferson. But I think the, the overall climate is very positive. I think staff are supporting each other, and, and families are supporting our staff. And a couple of examples, and we're not really sure who did it, but there have been some signs that have been put up at the school, and just thank you signs. And no one really knows who did it, but that, that means a great deal to the staff each and every day when they, they receive that, that acknowledgement as well. Earlier in the year, a local church, Emmanuel Baptist, provided a treat basket and gave each staff member a card. So the community is really reaching out in various ways to, to support, support our schools. So do you have, do you have any questions?
No, I just wish everybody could be there in person, but.
Absolutely.
Hopefully, we'll get there soon, sooner rather than later, but thank you, Jim.
Okay.
It's, I'm glad to hear all the good news and the support you're getting from the community and everybody else. I think it's important at this time that we all reach out and say a little thank you here, there, and everywhere.
Absolutely.
Keep people's characters or tendencies going, so there you are.
Thank you.
Thanks. And that was nice and short, so.
I, I heard there was a full agenda, and I didn't want to cut into it.
Good job. Does anybody else have any questions of Jim?
Just to thank you, Jim. Yeah, that was great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Alright, thank you. Got a thumbs up from Amanda. All, all is good. Alright. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Next on our agenda is the CTE program, Perkins Grant Approval. This is a annual thing that we have to approve the board before Chris can actually get the grant going. So here's Mr. Franklin to tell us all about it.
Yeah, so I'm just going to kind of give you guys an update about the CTE program here at Pullman School District. So it's for the middle school and for the high school here. As you can see, I mean, all of the CTE programs are aligned with the vigorous academic and industry standards, and that's what the purpose of the advisory committees are. And so that's kind of a key thing. All CT programs, they have to integrate twenty-first century skills into the curriculum. And they, they, that's part of the program reapproval. They have to submit those. And a lot of leadership skills is carried over into the CTSO, the Career Technical Student Organizations, such as Skills or FFA and those type of programs, DECA and FCLA. And so those, that's where you're going to see those, and those are those leadership skills that are being taught both in the classroom and after school a lot of times. CT classes can often fulfill graduation pathways, and graduation pathways from the time they came out in January to the time they are now, it, it, they're, they've changed. And OSBI keeps changing the rules, and I wouldn't say it's OSBI. I think it's the College Board. The State Board of Education is changing things, and as long as they take two consecutive classes in a pathway that leads to a, a certificate, meaning if a person took, let's say multimedia and new media, that leads them to an Adobe certification at the college level, that could count as a graduation pathway. That, that was just changed here in August, September, and we've been working with our counselors with that. Some CT classes are dual-credited for tuition-free college credit. We do have Culinary Arts and I-Live, and Foods and Nutrition, Metals, and Animal Science and Plant Science. So those kids, not only are they getting high school credit, but they're also getting their, they can also earn, they have the potential of earning college credit through Walla Walla Community College. We've tried to branch out to Spokane Falls last spring, and a lot of, a lot of our curriculum, they didn't say, seem to align with what they had, and so we didn't, we weren't able to do that. But there's a few others that instructors are looking out at, South Seattle Community College and things. So every five years, as, as I mentioned before, all CT programs need to be reapproved. That means instructors have to spend probably, per class is probably about five to six hours, rewriting their frameworks, aligning them to academic standards. They have to get them reapproved through OSBI. This year, Multimedia, Photography, Metals and Woods, which falls under the Skills and Technical Sciences, have to be reapproved, and we can start doing that in January first. And so that, that's going to be a big thing. Last year, we got all of our ag classes reapproved with. And because there's so much changes at OSBI, sometimes it can be challenging. But for the most part, our instructors do an awesome job of getting their frameworks to us and, and getting those done. So that's kind of a nice thing. So one thing I included this year, just so you guys can see, this is the, the statistics from last year. These are just statistics. If you go down to the next slide there, Courtney, the Career and Technical Education Statistics, those are kind of giving you program offerings that we have. And it also breaks it down into percent of students enrolled. Sixty-nine percent of the high school students were enrolled in CTE last year. Forty-four percent of the, the Lincoln Middle School kids were enrolled. If you look at the percent of ELL or sped kids, you, you can see the percentages there as well. We do, we did break it down into low and, low income, you know, for CTE classes, gender demographics. And we'll, we'll talk a little bit about this and, and later on down here in the slides. But in the gender demographics piece, you'll see that there's quite a bit more males that take CTE classes, both at the high school and the middle school. And so those are some things that, those are those underrepresented areas that we'll, we'll need to continue to address and make those, make those offerings available, you know, and hopefully push some from the female population into, to look into the CT class. Now, there's not a big discrepancy, but there is enough that, you know, kind of, kind of makes us look at it. We also broke it down by racial demographics as well. And then the last one, the last slide down here on the right is your CTE completers. Now, a CT completer is someone who has completed two courses in a pathway. So, and I'll go back to multimedia and new media. If they complete two sequences of a class, those are counted as a CT completers. And so last year, we, we, those are the, the CT completers that we had. And so it's kind of a nice thing. It kind of gives you a breakdown. We had a hundred and sixty-five last year, or two years ago. In seventeen eighteen, we had a hundred and twenty-two, and in sixteen and seventeen, we had a hundred and forty-seven. So we're getting a lot of CT completers that are completing two, two years of a CT class, which is a great thing. So the next one, the next slide down is just, I just wanted to kind of give you guys, you know, just let you guys know the different CT course offerings that we have. The Lincoln Middle School, we have, we have Electronics Gateway Technology A, Gateway Technology B, which the Gateway Technology B is really focuses on the biomedical aspects. We have Computer Applications, which is a required class for all eighth graders. And then we have Communication Media, which is a Channel Three and things like that. Okay, so the next one is all the courses this year that we're offering at Pullman High School. And so in Business Marketing Education, we have Leadership, Career Choices, Economics, Marketing, and Yearbook. And I kind of listed the classes there as well. In Agricultural and Natural Science Education, Animal Science, Vet Science. We didn't have enough people. Vet Science is a new class this year for us. We didn't have a big number of, of signups for that. And so it's kind of one class that's being taught Animal Science and Vet Science, Plant Science, Ag Physical Science, Ag Biology. So, so those are some, the Ag ones, Sports Medicine, Sports Medicine one and two is one class. We didn't have a lot of signup for Sports Medicine one, so we had to combine those for that. Skilled and Technical Sciences, Digital Photography, one class, Advanced Video Production, three D Animation is one class. Multimedia is three classes, New Media. New Media is the one that does the Hound Central, and they do a great job with that. So there's one class of that. And then also under the Skills and Technical Sciences, your, your Metals Class, which we have three of those, and your Woods Class. Fortunately, we had a great number of kids sign up for computer-aided drafting, so we brought back the CAD class this year. And so we have one classes of that as well. AP Computer Science is also a CT class, and so we have one class of that this year. Last year, we had two, and so enrollment was a little bit down. And, and I think a lot of, you'll see a lot of this was, I mean, we did registration after we were out of school in March, and we did it in April, and so I think there's a lot of, you know, when kids are coming in for, to talk to teachers, there wasn't a lot of recruitment by the teachers. And so even going over the eighth graders, there wasn't a lot of that. So that's why I think some of the classes are a little bit down. Family Consumer Science, Foods and Nutrition, we have three Culinary Arts, one class, and Textiles and Apparelles, we have one class there. So those are kind of the course offerings. So before I move on to the next slide, any questions about the, any of the course offerings that we have?
Chris, do you feel like, because it was, their kids were maybe looking ahead to virtual learning, they thought some of these might be much more difficult to do virtually, that that would affect your enrollment at all?
That, that's a great question. That could very well be. I do know that, you know, March thirteenth is the date that we all learned that school was postponed for the rest of the year. I do know, like, that, that fault, the next week, our CT teachers are going to go down and recruit the eighth-grade level. And so I think a lot of it is those eighth graders coming up to the high school probably weren't fully aware. Our, our CT teachers didn't have an opportunity to go down and recruit a little bit. Also, you know, towards the end of the year, when we're, when the upper, upper grades are registering, I don't think there's a, there was a lot of teachers out recruiting, you know, setting up tables, whatnot, if need to be at lunches, things like that. So I think there, a lot of the online stuff did play a factor into it. I'm not sure about the online education piece of it.
Right.
But that could have very, very well been too. I mean, yeah.
I mean, I'm sure there's a lot.
That's a great question.
Yeah. Alright. Anybody else have questions so far? Mike, carry on.
Alright. Alright, so the next one is just kind of a, kind of an update of, of different things. So every year, we apply for the Perkins Grant. It's the Carl D. Perkins Grant. It's federal funding that is allotted to school districts and post, post-secondary education. We use this, we use this Perkins Grant for purchasing equipment, supplies to enhance student learning, and sometimes professional development for staff. So, and when we talk about that, it's a lot of times towards the end of the year, OSBI will come out and say, oh, we have so much money left, you know, for, for ag teachers, especially ag teachers. They'll apply for these, the Perkins Extension Grants, where they can actually go to, use it to go to a, the, the National State Conference in the summer and different things like that. So what I gave you guys is a, just a, kind of a matrix of, of what we've used at the, the, the Perkins Grant the last couple of years, two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two, that's next year. We're going to use it for Family Consumer and Science. This year, we have, we've been allocated nineteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars for ag education. So we'll be working with Rob Matthews to, to see how we can utilize that. Last year, we, we got eighteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight. Multimedia received that grant, and we bought, we outfitted the, if you haven't been back into the back of the school, we outfitted the ambulance with a, a lot of equipment. The ambulance is actually fully ready to go to produce things. We just don't have anything to produce at this point. But Doug has done an awesome job outfitting that, so. In two thousand eighteen and nineteen, seventeen thousand one hundred and twenty dollars was spent for Metals and Woods. We bought a brand-new CNC router for, wood router for the wood shop. And Tim Shosko finally was able to get that up and running this past couple of weeks. We brought the company in that sold it to us, got some training in it this week, and he's actually been cutting a lot of great things lately with that. And then in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, we had sixteen thousand six hundred and fifty-five. We use that for business ed. They needed a PC laptop cart, and also ag summer conference registration was used for that, because he, we, he applied and got some of that money for that as well. Two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and two thousand fifteen, sixteen, I wasn't the CT director, so I, I, I'm not sure what happened there. Sixteen and seventeen, we didn't, we did not submit an application for the grant. And seventeen, or fifteen and sixteen, we had seventeen thousand, which went to ag education for the Chromebook cart, for Chromebook cart for their classroom. So that's kind of what we've used the, the Perkins Grant a little bit for there. Any questions about the Perkins Grant? And I know, well, in the, we'll, we'll get it into the next board meeting under the consent agenda. Once we, hopefully, I'll get all the application. The application just came out last week. And it, there's a lot of work that needs to be done on it, just because that's what they require us to do. And so it needs to be submitted by October thirty-first. So hopefully, by the next board meeting, we'll get all that printed out and into the consent agenda. So you, you guys will be able to see that. Part of the Perkins Grant, and this is the thing that's making CTE really difficult, is the federal government has required every CTE program to do what's called a comprehensive local needs assessment, a CLNA. So it's a new requirement, and so we have to look at kind of the statistics I showed you up above. But we also have to look at, you know, gender equity. We have to kind of look at CT through an equity lens. And so kind of the purpose of that was to, opportunity to examine the success of the CT programs, make certain that programs and programs of studies are aligned, ensure that school district CT programs are serving each learner equitably. That's kind of the, some of the, the statistics we're looking at. Enable school districts to better direct resources towards programs, making sure that all programs are equally supported. Create a platform for coordinating and streamlining existing program reviews. School improvement process to bring focus back to strategic decisions. And that's kind of a lot, a lot, long lines of the General Advisory Committee and the program advisories. They help with that. Provide a structured way to engage stakeholders with amount of information. And this is the, the labor workforce that this is kind of geared towards, is to make sure that we are providing the correct labor workforce for our area. And so that's kind of what the CLNA, it's a very difficult thing. This is a brand-new thing. It's been the huge learning curve on this, and it's a huge part of this coming up, Perkins Grant, because we have to submit a lot of information. Fortunately, we. Uh, fortunately, we, we're in a consortium with the Spokane School Districts, um, and all the smaller school districts around there. So we've got some great resources to be able to utilize with that and help us with that. So go ahead, go to the next slide there. And so some of the, the things that, um, have happened is that in January twenty twenty, the Spokane Consortium of Career and Technical Education, we established a regional CLNA committee to evaluate all schools in this consortium. So we had to submit all of our, our data and information to the, the, the regional consortium, which I'm part of. And so we get, we did that, it got all approved. Uh, then last February, we established the Pullman School District CT, uh, CLNA committee. And we looked at the school district's data, uh, some of the areas that we looked at, uh, was element one was improving equity and access. Element two is evaluation of student performance, which because this is a new program, uh, we, we, we didn't have the baseline data yet because it was, that will be for this coming year. Um, so we'll, we'll look at that at this coming years, uh, CLNA stuff. Evaluation of CT programs, I mean, alignment, including size, scope and quality, uh, making sure there's, um, pathways in college, you know, opportunity to get into college credit, uh, to that dual credit piece or to get them out on the labor industry workforce area. Uh, implementation of programs and CT programs and study. Uh, the CT program of study is kind of working with colleges to make sure that our kids are going, doing the correct things to be able to go to college, to go and go after whether, whether it was ag education or family consumer science, and we can do that. Uh, recruitment, retention and training of CT educators. How are we, how, how are we going to be doing to keep our CT teachers and recruiting more CT teachers if needed? So that's kind of, kind of what we've looked at in this. And so with our committee, if you go scroll to the next page, so the seats, the PSD, CTE, CLNA and a lot of abbreviation, a lot of acronyms there. Um, so we kind of looked at it and we, as we looked at all the data, some of the things that we, we looked at, um, and identified, so our first, in, if you look at the priority rating there, implementation of programs and CT programs of study, uh, only five courses are articulated for dual credit. And I think that's, we kind of identified that as, uh, area to increase. We'd like more articulations, uh, more, um, certificates or work or industry certificates would be great thing. So that was kind of an area of focus that we decided. Uh, element one, if you go up to the first element, improving equity and access. And this goes back to, uh, what I mentioned earlier about there's not as many girls in the CT classes. And how do we get that? So female enrollment is low at the high school and at the middle school. And how do we get that? Uh, we need to recruit CT teachers maybe for middle school programs to offer more CT offerings there. Um, the third element that the committee identified was evaluation of CT programs. Uh, most CT programs meet economic and labor needs, which is great. And that's what the purpose of advisory committees are. Um, and average participation of students of CTSOs that after school, that leadership component. Uh, there's, there's average participation, given the number of, uh, number of students that are in CT. Um, utilization of advisory committees for program evaluation, which we've been doing. Um, recruit more students for CTSOs, you know, helping, helping get more kids in the, the skills and the FFA and the DECA competitions and everything like that. So that's, that's kind of, those are the kind of the areas. And then the last one is recruitment, retention and training of CT educators. Many CT teachers are converted from basic education teachers and lack industry experience. Um, and so I think that's a, that's an area that, you know, we could, you know, the purpose of career technical education teachers are to bring them in, uh, from the industry. So we're given that real world situation. Um, and so that might be another area of intentionally focusing on, you know, making sure we get the STEM CT teachers and, um, you know, make start a pre-engineering class, work with SCL, some of those type of things. So, um, so then, so the next slide, uh, it challenges and future directions. You know, we have a, we, our CT teachers are really good at what they do. Um, doesn't matter at the middle school, at the high school. We do have a really good, I've been involved in CT for twenty-six years. Our CT teachers are pretty darn good. Um, you know, so challenges are adding more classes without taking away from current programs. And as, as I've mentioned before, it's hard to add one class over here out of this bucket. And where are we going to get the kids? Because we don't have an abundant amount of kids coming to Pullman High School or Lincoln Middle School. So it, it would have to take away from something. So that's a challenge, uh, meeting the ever-changing CT compliance requirements. The CT is changing, I mean, just from January, when the graduation pathways came out to now, they've changed so much. So just CT is always changing and there's always compliance issues. Um, Perkins Grant and comprehensive local needs assessment is a challenge. Um, it takes a long time and it's a good thing that the CT, the Perkins Grant opened up last week. So now I can, I have a few weeks to work on that. Um, so future direction, you know, focus on the programs we currently offer and continue to handsome. And I think our teachers do a great job of that. Um, and my goal is to make it the best in the state, if not the nation. Um, the other thing, future director, our CT, uh, Aberdeen's or CT's secretary has done a tremendous job. She, not only is she doing the count, she's meeting the demands of he, uh, the budgety framework. She helps proof those frameworks. Um, the CT website, if you haven't looked at the CT website, she's keeping that up to date. Advisory committees, she's done a, a really great job. She actually attended the, the, the fall CTE conference this week. And I think she's, she's definitely learning a lot and, but she's doing a great job. And, uh, a lot of the things that are happening in CT couldn't happen without her. So that's great. Um, and you know, continued community, community involvement with program advisory committees. So, and that's what runs those, those, uh, those programs, those community advisory committees or those program advisor committees or community members in the industry that help determine the curriculum. Um, you know, and what, what might need to be taught based off industry needs and, and data. So, and I think that's it. I know it was a little bit longer than I like, but, uh, there's some good information in there for you guys.
Covered a lot, yeah.
So.
Thank you.
So feel free to look at it. If you do have any questions, please feel free to email me.
And does anybody have any questions, Chris?
Well, I wanted to thank you, Chris, uh, for the report. Uh, in years past, the advisory committees were somewhat, um, and issues. So have those, have those improved in, in terms of participation from community people?
Yeah, I think, uh, yes, I would say the answer to that is yes. I think our, our teachers have done a great job of recruiting. Um, and I think we've put some more focus on that a little bit too. And having Amber there, making sure that those, the, the instructors are having those advisory committees. And we have the general advisory committee as well. And so, and we take typically for the general advisory committee, which oversees all of them. We just take the chairperson of every advisory committee and then they were, do a report on it. Uh, I think that's kind, in my opinion, is a more efficient way of doing it. But yes, we are, the advisory committees are doing really a nice job. Uh, ag and business ed have a great, they, they're great. They're, they meet more than, than we require them to, which is nice. Uh, multimedia and family consumer science in, in metals and metals and woods. Metals and Woods is kind of still in that adjustment period. They're still recruiting people, which is great. Uh, but they're all doing a really nice job, in my opinion. Um, you know, they did the program evaluations, um, and everything like that. So I think the, the advisory committees are coming along pretty nicely.
That included, uh, that included in-depth minutes, keeping the minutes.
Yeah.
Regular minutes, right?
Yeah, and so, yes, and so we, we give the instructors a template now, that the, here's the things you're required to go through. And then there's also a little option down below, uh, um, you know, if you need to add anything else and, but here are the things that we need. Uh, a lot of that's Perkins Grant spaced, um, because we need to show some of these things that weren't getting covered, but they are now.
I just have one more comment, uh, Chris. Uh, you mentioned the disconnect between, uh, Lincoln Middle School this past year in terms of CTE involvement, is that correct?
There's, I would say just because of, because we all went to the online learning. Uh, I would say that would be the disconnect. Our instructors really collaborate pretty well. Uh, Ed Davis has really helped Johanna Brown with the AP computer science and the advisory committees. Doug Wintle and John Willie, uh, work really well together and all, you know, because they, they teach similar subjects. But John Willie also works with Melissa Mayer and the, the business ed advisory committee quite, quite really well. And so I, I don't think there's disconnect with teachers. I think it's more them recruiting kids to come into the CT classes. And I think we just, when everything hit in March thirteenth, um, there was just, we, we missed that opportunity, I should say.
Since many of the, uh, kids in middle school are online, uh, and you maybe put together a short video about CTE programs and, uh, kind of perjure answers that way.
Yeah, and I think Doug Wintle, I mean, he's looking for things for his kids to do online too. And, and so there are some avenues for that. And, uh, because every kid has to take the computer applications class with John Willie. I know John Willie's been helped pushing that as well. And so I think there's, there's, there's some group efforts with that, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, thanks, that's great.
Thank you, Chris. Lots of information. Keep up the good work.
Thanks.
And next we have, um, probably the most beautiful financial director for a school in, in the state to give us a, uh, year-end budget report. Mrs. Hodge. Okay, are you going to pull it up, Courtney?
Can you not see it?
Good job.
Uh-uh.
Okay, let's try this again then.
Oh, there's Bob.
You see it now?
There we go, yep. Okay, kind of same presentation, different background. But I finally got the year end done. It was not as easy as it typically is. You can move on, Courtney. So this was me before completing year end. No joke, I even went to Bob and just said, okay, I have no idea how this year is going to end up, but we'll try and figure it out. Go ahead. So here's our enrollment, our tenure histories. You can see the last two years, we've kind of, um, declined in our enrollment a little bit. And then our general fund balance, we ended with seven point six million this year. Um, it's a little bit higher than we anticipated, but I am actually happy it ended a little bit higher because our enrollment significantly will decrease this year due to COVID. And, um, we are transferring eight hundred thousand out from general fund to capital projects, um, for the metal roof at Lincoln Middle School. So this worked out to our benefit a little bit. Um, so we're just going to have to see how it ends next year with our, um, decrease in enrollment. And again, a two-year comparison of our revenue between eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty. Uh, we did receive one point two million, two million dollars more than we did in eighteen, nineteen, um, in apportionment. And then, uh, just a summary of our revenue. Again, the majority of our revenue, the sixty-six percent comes from state apportionment. And the other federal, um, or state special purposes are, um, sped and lap. And that's our, um, second highest. And then third is our local taxes, which is our levy. And our expenditures by program, again, regular instruction, classroom instruction is our highest percentage. Support services and then special education are top three expenditures in the district. And I'd just like to give a description of the expenditures by program. So when I say regular instruction, that's what it means. Support services, compensatory programs and other instructional programs. So people can have an idea of what that breakdown, um, entails. And our expenditures by activity, um, instruction, again, classroom instruction is our highest percentage, um, with maintenance and operations coming in second. And then again, district support is third. And again, a breakdown of our activity by description. Um, just so people, people can be aware, maintenance and operation being our second highest. I like to point out that it's grounds, maintenance, custodial, um, utilities and insurance. And our expenditures by object, um, certificated salaries are our highest expenditure, um, with employees, uh, employee benefits and taxes coming in second and classified salaries coming in third. And this is our general fund balance composition. Um, so we do have our minimum fund balance, um, that we, that we put aside in reserves. That's supposed to be one month's payroll. But this year our, um, one month payroll comes in at about two point seven million. So we're still just a little bit shy of one month payroll. And the restricted for carryovers are LAP and state funded professional development. And then, um, the nineteen thousand is our food service inventory. And capital projects, this is, um, you know, our beginning fund balance, revenues, expenditures and our ending fund balance. And then a description of where that revenue came from and then where expenditures, um, were spent. Our debt service fund, same thing, beginning fund balance. And this again is just solely for servicing our bonds and principal and interest. Our associate student body fund, um, again, this is just made up mostly the revenue and expenditures are Lincoln and High School. And then we do have some fifth grade camp in there. And it can only be used for, um, cu- uh, cultural, athletic, recreational and social events for students. And then on the next page, um, there's a breakdown of the revenue by, or the, um, ending fund balance by school. And again, the Jefferson Franklin Sunnyside Cameo, that is for fifth grade camp. And so the money that we raised for fifth grade camp, the spaghetti feed, that stays in those accounts. Um, that can't be spent for anything else. Transportation vehicle, um, you know, we had the revenues from the transfer over last year. And because we purchased the buses, so the expenditures for the buses we purchased. And then we do have an ending fund balance of eight hundred and twenty thousand. And this was me after I got done completing year end. Um, you know, in order to save mine and Bob's job, I went through a hundred and fifty-eight page sub fund one expenditure report just to make sure that everything we spent in sub fund one could be spent in sub fund one. And then there was some conflicting information on, um, how we report the revenues and expenditures, uh, for food service and transportation. So I kind of just did my best and, um, shared everything with Bob. And so we're kind of in this together. And that's how we ended up. It was just, it was just kind of a mess. Everything had to be meaningful work. We couldn't charge it here, we couldn't charge it there. I have two documentations that we're supposed to JV it out here, but then another one that says we JV it out here. So I just kept all the doc, documentation with every JV I did and we'll see how it turns out. And that's it. Any questions? Geez, I, I don't know how you did it, but well done. Yeah. I tell you what, it was a jigsaw this year. But go ahead, Nathan.
Oh, I was just, first, I love your graphics. Thank you so much. I'm probably going to pull a few of those just for my general presentations because it's. Um, but I was, I was curious, uh, your comment that we would experience a substantial enrollment. Please, um, do you, do you have any idea what that looks like now? And if not, when do you think we'll know what our enrollment looks like for next year's budgeting cycle?
You know, Nathan, that's a good question. So, um, you know, we are down, is it Bob, about a hundred and thirty kids right now? Hundred, hundred and thirty, hundred and fifty-four? I can't, I don't know.
Probably closer to a hundred and sixty.
A hundred and sixty now? I know that we keep getting, um, withdrawals every day. So that hundred and sixty, well, a hundred and fifty would equilibrate to one point three million dollars in lost revenue, um, or state apportionment. So, um, that's pretty significant. Um, the only thing we have going for us is our fund balance right now. If we were a district that was sitting at, you know, anywhere from five, five percent or lower, we would not be making it right now. So we're in a fortunate position financially. And, um, if, I, I don't know how it's going to look when students start coming back. We can, um, get as, you know, we can file, uh, a form with the state to use another month. If our enrollment starts coming in higher, then they'll start averaging it with, from that month. Um, I just, you know, it's a crystal ball, Nathan. I don't know what it's going to look like. I can, I would hope that once we start opening school, that people will bring their kids back. Um, and we can start claiming them on enrollment, so it will increase. Are we going to get back to where we were? I highly doubt it. We can, um, anticipate a significant loss at this point, but at least we've got the cushion to, um, to bounce back from this. So, um, you know, I, I don't know.
And the, and this might be for Bob, so feel free to chime in. But I mean, most of the withdrawals that we've been getting, are they, gather that they're temporary? Or, or is the, are, you know, are these parents making other plans kind of permanently?
Uh, I'll think kind of some of that in a choice report, but, um, it's down across the state. We're down. We're down, last time I checked, we're, we've lost 5.7% of our student population to other places. We'll probably get most of them back, but I don't think we're gonna get all of them back.
Okay, so you, you, you don't think that if they've withdrawn, those are permanent? Like some of them, once we reopen into physical, you know, physical locations, we would expect a lot of those to come back?
I think it's gonna be interesting to see. I think some will. I think some will not. I think some may stay where they're at, not only this year, but may end up staying in future years.
Thanks, Bob. And I, I realize you don't know all the answers. I just, I appreciate the context.
You're welcome.
And that's it.
Okay. Any other questions of Diane? Well, thank you very much. You two have a knack of making these reports a little more tolerable. So thank you for that.
Well, and thank you for planning ahead. Just gonna say that right now. Thank you very much for planning ahead.
Yeah. It's nice to know at least we have the, I'm surprised we do. I thought this thing that we've been dealing with would have eaten up more of the reserves than.
Well, I, I mean, I've learned a lot of lessons this year, but I think, you know, holding and fighting for those reserves as hard as we did was, was the right decision.
Well, and I agree with you, Nathan, because, you know, it never hurts to have cushion in your reserve, even though, you know, I, I know people like to go after it if you have a higher reserve. But this is kind of proving our point that you need a little bit of a cushion for situations like this. You just never know when they're gonna happen.
Yeah. So there we are. Thank you Diane. Okay. So next is Joe Thornton with our executive director of operations with his risk management report.
Yes, Susan, Diane's gonna be a tough act to follow, so I'm gonna put this.
I know. You're not as pretty as she is.
I have the same volume to my hair, don't I?
Yeah, I know it.
I completely disagree, Joe.
So this will come in the category of not as tolerable, but very brief. This is the annual risk management report to you. The first thing I want to point out is that our insurance costs only went up 1.4%, which I think is wonderful. You'll remember that a lot of those big jumps we had over the last several years, one of them had to do with going from a
Cameo.
150,000 square foot high school to 200,000 square foot high school. Another one was because we added 73,000 square feet of space at Cameo. Interestingly enough, I see that it seems as if our transportation costs are going down. Again, you know, this, this insurance thing is somewhat of a witch's brew when they come up with numbers. But I think the insurance costs are going down as a reflection of us having a newer bus fleet. A newer bus is gonna be a safer bus. So I think that's a big piece of it. I'm very excited to announce that we are currently for the district at zero. With zero pending lawsuits. They're all off the board. The last one was dismissed this summer. And to show you the impact lawsuits have, for while there was some confusion, part of risk, the status of that lawsuit, our premium this year would have been $6,000 higher just pending lawsuit, even though we were completely in the, in the clear on that. It would have been $6,000 higher for us. Which goes back to my point, several years ago, I had a conversation with a teacher about this whole snack idea. And the district wanted to put some parameters on that. And the teacher saying, well, if, if a kid has a reaction to a food in my classroom, that's on me as a teacher. And I had to interrupt him and say, that's not on you, because the districts will get sued. That's on all of us. So everything we do is everybody's responsibility. So below that is just the annual overview of all the things we do to try to minimize our risk as much as possible. Any questions?
No. Anybody else have a question? Short and sweet. Way to go, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Down now. Did you have a question, Jim?
No, I just said thanks.
Oh, okay, thank you. Next is Dr. Maxwell with the district choice report.
Thank you, Susan. And so this is a report you see each year. It's the same format as the last five years. Nathan, I'll try to address some of your questions regarding student enrollment. This might help. When you're looking at choicing into Pullman, it's down slightly. You can see in 2021, only 59 students choice in compared to 72 of the year prior. Most of those choice in students come from three districts. That would be Colfax, Palouse and Colton. If you go down and look at the grade level distribution. Choosing out of Pullman, and this is going, this is a lot due to COVID. This was on October 1st, so these numbers are not accurate. They're actually, will be a little bit higher, but we have 25 elementary that have choiced out, 24 middle school, 17 high school, but this week I've signed off, I think, a couple more high school and a couple middle school and elementary. So you can see that that's quite a bit of students choosing out. Where are students going to? As you can see, many are going to online programs or the districts that are offering in-person. If you look at the totals, the other large group of, well, that doesn't really add up to 160 students. But I want you to take a look at home-based instruction, which went from 61 last year to 143. I am hoping that we'll get most of those 143 back when we're in person. But again, you could see the choice out went from 27 last year to 66. So again, taking a look at those numbers, I think, Nathan, that, that may answer some of your questions. And that's my report.
Do we, do we have any plans to, I mean, once the, you know, hope to God the situation improves. But once the situation improves, are we gonna reach out to these families and, you know, try to, you know, them back in? Do we have any plans for that? Or, I mean, is there, is it kind of nothing we can do?
With, with home base, there are some particular dates that we have to adhere to by regulations, but we will be reaching out. I've been in, received several emails from parents. Some are not yet comfortable to return back this year or may have a medical reason in the family why, why they want to remain online. But it does make me think, just even looking at the number of home-based participants, even in non-COVID years, then I would like to tell you, take a look at maybe a home-based partnership where maybe we could serve some of those home-based students in our schools and collect some revenue for that. So it's kind of a partnership.
No, that's a, that's an excellent idea, Bob. And I think, and this is just a suggestion, so take it with a grain of salt. But if we could just strategize ways that we could provide services or just, you know, try to get them back in the door completely. But like you're saying, you know, maybe shop or CTE or something. Cause I, you know, that, anything that we can do to close that, that budget gap, you know? But I'm sure you're, you know, you guys are already thinking a lot about this.
Yes, we are.
You wanna get these schools open first?
Yeah, Bob, you mentioned other school districts are experiencing the same kind of dynamics. Were those in Eastern Washington in 101 or were they kind of statewide or regional or what?
Not only regional, but statewide. And I, I'm sorry, I didn't have a report that statewide, I believe it's something like 33,000 students did not return to school at all.
And Jim, anecdotally, I was just in my ledge committee meeting, you know, with all the district reps from the various areas. And they, they, we were all kind of chatting about enrollment declines. And, and there wasn't a soul there that hadn't experienced some form of enrollment decline. And so, I mean, I think it's pretty, pretty widespread.
Yeah, it's pretty much widespread, except for maybe a couple districts that are offering like Wawa through OMAC School District. I'm sure they've seen an increase because of their online. But almost every district in the state is experiencing a decline and some are pretty severe. Luckily ours is about 5.7%, but some are up, up near 20%.
Okay.
Wow. Painful. Any other questions of Dr. Maxwell?
All right.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. We'll go to.
I'm sorry I'm late. Can I ask a question?
Oh, I guess so. Sure.
Sorry, it was hard for me to hit the unmute button. I just wanted to piggyback on, on Nathan's comments. I thought that was good to be thinking of in advance and I'm sure you all already are. But it occurred to me, I wonder if also something Nathan said at the last meeting, I believe, in terms of promoting school climate even while we are online, if we had super rich ASB type activities that people wanted to do and be a part of, like esports or things like that, that are perfectly COVID safe. But let's say we had a really competitive esports league that people wanted to be a part of. That would be a reason, I would think, to want to be in high school. And it would be good for students too, because they could be socializing. So it could be, just, just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you, Allison. Yeah, we're talking about all those types of activities and ideas, so we appreciate it.
Well, I know a few years ago that there was a big rage for ukulele playing. And that's something that you can do even virtually. My, my 11-year-old granddaughter takes ukulele lessons virtually. So can't we come up with some fun things for these kids to do? I, I, we'd have to find an instructor or something, but there are a lot of options, like Allison said, sports-wise. And clubs are going now.
I will, yeah.
Understand and.
Yeah, I have some of those listed out in a PowerPoint presentation later on at discussion.
Okay. All right, all right. Then we'll hold off and go there. So next, anything else? Anybody have another question? Any comments they want to throw in? Okay, we'll go on to the visitor's section. And this is a section that we have on our agenda every single meeting. It's a part of the agenda for anyone wishing to speak before the board, either as an individual or a member of a group. The visitors wishing to speak must have signed up on a virtual sign-in sheet. Hopefully sometime soon we'll be able to do it all in person. But in the meantime, visitors addressing the board will unmute their microphone when called upon and they state their name, address prior to presenting their information. Board will listen and may offer clarification, but will not discuss the topic at this time. The board may consider removing, excuse me, the topic presented to a future meeting date as a discussion item. We do ask that you please keep your comments civil and respectful and do limit your remarks to three minutes. Individual speakers may not give their time left over to other speakers. Please listen for your name if you, as you will be called to speak in the order which you signed up. And Courtney, do we have anybody signed up?
No.
Okay, well, next we'll go on to the consent agenda. And this is to expedite business at a board meeting. The board approves the use of a consent agenda to include items that are considered to be routine in nature. Any item which appears in the consent agenda may be removed from the consent agenda by a member of the board and voted on separately. The remaining items will be voted on by a single motion. And these items tonight include minutes of our previous meetings, personnel report, personal and professional services contracts, warrants, transfer requests and budget, budget status report. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Nathan. Is there a second? Thank you, Amanda. So it's been moved and seconded that we do approve tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify with a thumbs up. Any opposed? Speak out. Okay, thank you. Next, we'll go on to action items. These are items that we discussed previously. And now we need to make, take action on them. And first of all, it's Resolution 202008, District reopening suspension of policy.
Thank you, Susan. This was presented at our last board meeting. This is basically extension of a resolution that we had earlier during the pandemic. And just basically provides the superintendent with the authorization to waive a policy or procedure specific to an immediate need in a crisis. We haven't had to do that. I'm not anticipating that we will, but just in case, that would be something that we would ask for your approval. An example might be, which happened earlier, where our milk delivery company could not make the delivery. We have a contract with them. We authorized to go with another company that could provide us with the milk delivery. And I've had no questions or comments since the last time this was presented.
Are there any questions or comments now?
I move approval of the district reopening suspension of policy Resolution 202108.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Jim. It's been moved and seconded that we do approve Resolution 202108. All those in favor, please signify with a thumbs up. Any opposed? Same sign? All right, thank you. That resolution has been approved. Thank you all. Next, we'll go to Dr. Maxwell discussing the minimum basic education compliance report.
Yes, thank you, Susan. So again, this is an annual requirement and report. We've seen it before. We had a slight discussion on this last time we met, but we do meet the instructional hours according to the state minimum graduation requirements as well, as well as the minimum basic ed. So we're asking for approval.
How do you meet all those requirements during this virtual time? How do you, how can you assure that these requirements have been met?
Due to the definition of instructional hours that have been adjusted, the definition in the RCW or LAC. And so we're monitoring that, making sure that the activities that we have as far as asynchronous or planning for those asynchronous do count as instructional hours.
Okay, thank you. I was just trying to figure out how you can verify all that, but.
It's a challenge.
Yeah, I bet. Well, isn't everything at this point? Okay, thank you.
I move approval of a minimum basic education compliance report for 2021.
Thank you, Jim. Is there a second? Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify with a thumbs up. I see everybody's thumbs up, so this one has been approved as well. Next, we'll go on to discussion items. And heaven sakes, look at this one. This is the Resolution 202109 Cameo Elementary School Commissioning Resolution. Finally, huh? Mr. Thornton? Oh, Joe. Did he leave us?
I'm not sure, but I, I can help with this one. This is, you've been through this before with several of our other projects.
Oh, there he is.
There he is. Yeah. I assume when I speak, everyone listens. Courtney, if you can pull up the PowerPoint, please. There's only four slides. So I'm asking you for your consideration this evening for you to accept the commissioning report of, for Cameo Elementary School. It's a requirement of projects that included some state funding. I'm sure all of you poured over the 1,219-page document that I sent to you via email. But to refresh your memory from a couple of years ago, commissioning, next slide, please. The purpose of commissioning is to basically go through systems and make sure they're installed properly and as designed. Next slide, Courtney. So it's, it's everything from checklist to verifying that equipment is correct, to documenting deficiencies and to making sure that the owner is receiving necessary training. Next slide. And in a nutshell, why do we need commissioning? And in a nutshell, why do we need commissioning? Commissioning ensures that the district gets what we pay for, both in terms of what was designed, what was built. It's just a safe check, a safeguard, to make sure that all the systems were installed as designed and are functioning properly. Any questions about the acceptance, the resolution to accept the Cameac commissioning report?
Is this why it took so long to get it commissioned? There were some problems?
I wouldn't say there are problems. I would say there are bugs. There's always bugs. I mean, these, gone are the days of the one-room schoolhouse with a wood stove in the corner.
Yeah.
They're very complicated systems, and with literally tens of thousands of parts. The reality is parts fail, and those need to be replaced. And these systems are so integrated with each other, there's a lot of fine tuning that needs to happen. So it taking a year to make that happen is not uncommon.
But everything's going well now, right?
Yes.
Good. Any other questions of Joe on this?
Yes.
Yay.
So what has happened with commissioning reports to make them go from, say, 40 to 70 pages to over 1,000 pages?
I think that one of the things that's happened is that requirements have made school systems a lot more complicated and a lot more technical, both in terms of energy code, but in terms of what we're expecting buildings to do. A simple example of that is in all the classrooms at Cameac, all the duplex outlets, one of the outlets, one of the two outlets is tied to the motion sensors. So if nobody's occupying that room, that outlet will go dead. So that's a pretty complicated system to install, and also needed to verify that that was just installed and working properly. At the end of the day, is that a great energy-saving technology? Yes. Is it really expensive to install properly? Will we ever recover that money? That's to be debated. So I think that's part of the reason these commissioning reports have gotten so expansive, is because of the buildings becoming more and more complicated.
Okay, is Cameac completely done yet?
There are a couple of minor lingering issues that are warranty issues, so things that failed, and we're waiting for parts to get those corrected.
Okay, so when we accept and approve this report, we are accepting and approving that you have reviewed this report, and it's acceptable to you. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
So, and I know it's a discussion item this evening. Will the two unwarranty be fixed and ready to go by the time we pass this resolution?
Yes, and I will tell you, the warranty issues in the commission report are parallel. You would not be receiving the commission report if the engineer for CSG felt as if the systems were not complete.
Okay.
The warranty issues are things like an igniter in one of the ovens in the kitchen. And small things like that that are not system-wide, but are minor parts that need to be repaired.
Well, that's not part of the construction anyway. Is the other one part of the construction? I mean, if it's a part of an oven.
It was provided under the contract.
Oh, okay. All right.
It's a piece that the contractor has to repair, but it's not part of the commissioning system.
All right, okay. Well, I just, you know, I hate to say, oh, yeah, okay, on something, and then not have it all be the way it's supposed to be.
Sure. And there are many parts of the building that, even though we're past the bulk of the warranty, which is a one-year warranty, there are lots of bits and pieces that have an extended warranty. For example, another example of the warranty issue hanging out there right now is a security camera. Security cameras are a three-year warranty. Windows are a 10-year warranty. So there are lots of bits and pieces. The roof is a 30-year warranty. So there are lots of pieces that we might have to warranty down the road that are independent of the commissioning.
Okay.
If that makes any sense.
Yep, yep, yep. Any other questions? Right.
I move to accept the Resolution 2021-09, accepting and approving the commissioning report for the construction of Cameac Elementary.
Well, it works. It's just a discussion item tonight, Jim, unless you want to move it. If Joe feels we should move it to an action item, we can do so.
It's not necessary to move to an actual item in two weeks' time.
Okay, thank you, Joe. All right, next we have, oh, it's still Joe. Declaration of surplus property.
Yes, an annual surplus sale. We're to a point where we've accumulated enough stuff in our shop with winter approaching and us needing to get vehicles in the shop and get all the surplus stuff out of what will become a wet shop floor. I'm coming to you with a list of surplus items that we'd like to do for a surplus sale, and this does require a resolution. Additionally, if possible, it'd be great for this to be an action item tonight, because it still takes me a month to do a surplus sale, because I need to do ads two weeks in the paper and then wait a week after that to do the sale.
Okay.
By doing this tonight would allow me to get that process going.
Sure. So I'm at the will of the board on this. Do you have any questions about this?
I move that we turn this into an action item tonight, surplus inventory sale.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we move Resolution 2021-10, Declaration of Surplus Property, to an action item this evening. All those in favor, please signify with a thumbs up. This is my way to check, make sure you're all still awake. All right. I see no thumbs down, so we'll make this now an action item, and we'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2021-10, Declaration of Surplus Property.
Move that we approve Resolution 2110, right?
Yep, 2021-10. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we do approve Resolution 2021-10, Declaration of Surplus Property. Are there any questions, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify with a thumbs up. Any opposed? Well, no, it can't be anybody opposed, because I just saw four thumbs up, and I gave one. So, all right, here we go, Joe. You're ready to roll. Okay, thank you. All right, now we get to Dr. Maxwell and stages of reopening. Please make it soon. Yeah.
Dante's Inferno.
Please, no.
I'm going to have Courtney share the PowerPoint. Some of the things you mentioned are going to be included in this PowerPoint. So I'll kind of go through. We've been working on this for quite a while, so go to the next slide, please. So one of the things I think is really important for our community is that we have what I'm calling the stages of reopening document. So this can give an outline of how we will proceed once we have a recommendation from the Whitman County Health Department to start bringing back students in person. As you know, Pullman area has been in the spotlight for COVID cases. But what we're finding is many of those cases are limited to either college-age students or people that are living in nursing homes and very few in between. So it's kind of a unique circumstance. All other Whitman County schools are back in person, K-12. We do not have, you will not see dates in here, because we have not yet received any recommendation, but this is in anticipation of having a plan when we do receive a recommendation to return to school. This is a very complex, complicated activity to bring students back in person. There are a lot of variables that we're looking at. Also, given our unique circumstances, I believe a slow, what I'm calling a slow transition, will be helpful in maintaining safety and security for our students and staff. So I showed an example of this at a community Zoom last week. Got a lot of really good questions. It's a good feedback. I've been working with this, the consultation with the Whitman County Department of Health. We also received new guidance and metrics from WIAA. So we went back to look at aligning metrics with the Washington State Health Department decision tree, which is the 75 more cases per 100,000 over 14 days. That's a number one where we are now. When we go to a moderate, which is 25 to 75 cases per 100,000 residents over 14-day period and/or the Whitman County Department of Health recommendation. Right now, we are serving preschoolers. Our plan would be if we receive the recommendation that elementary students could return, as an example, we would plan to bring back K-1 first. We've been meeting with the K-1 teachers and representatives, building administrators, specialists, working on what that would look like, how long we'll do the transition, and I'll show that in a future slide here. Anyway, then it would be get them settled in, practice those routine safety protocols, then moving to grades 2, 3, do a very similar possibly transition. Make sure they know the protocols. Shouldn't take as much time, because those students are more familiar with the typical school procedures and transitions. Then we would bring back 4th, 5th, and then we would have to wait till a low COVID-19 activity level, which would be less than 25 cases per 100,000 residents over a 14-day period or Whitman County Department of Health recommendation. At that particular time, we would be looking at also bringing back in-person sports, hopefully, and activities in alignment with the regulations. And we'll tell you that WIAs come out with new guidance. That's the second time things have changed, and what we're finding is even some of the safety protocols have been changing, the more we learn about COVID or the more that the Health Department refines procedures and safety requirements. So we are constantly changing and adjusting. This is like building a puzzle, and in the middle of building a puzzle, they change some of the pieces. So we're continuing to work on it. This is a work in progress. But I believe this gives a nice, solid structure to return our students to in-person when we get the recommendation that it is safe to do so. There are also many pieces as far as staffing, which we are working on currently and will continue to work on.
Okay, so my big question is, is it because our COVID rate is so high with the College Hill and the, well, they used to be called nursing homes? With that rate, is that why we have to get the recommendation from the county?
Yeah, our COVID activity level is high due to the number of cases. And remember, we're not at 100,000, but more 40,000, 50,000. So we do have an unusually high number. But you've also seen recently Spokane's numbers beginning to rise as well. So in fact, I saw the Spokane Department Director of Health talking today about if things don't level out, there may be some more restrictions placed up in Spokane County. But what we're seeing in Whitman County is that between college age and maybe more of us in the experienced age bracket, there's very little in between, and so as far as COVID cases. So it seems to be consolidated in two specific age brackets and not spread out across the board evenly.
So that if we get a recommendation from Troy, then we could go ahead and go for it, and you're expecting that soon, hopefully?
We may receive it. A lot is going to depend. I can't emphasize enough, things can change over.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If the recommendation comes out, it doesn't mean immediately the next day we're going to open the schools.
No, no, I appreciate that, but we just got to get these kids back into school. It's killing me.
But what I do want to emphasize is we do have a plan, and the plan starts with bringing back those students that research has shown, and the data shows that.
They're not vulnerable, yeah.
Vulnerable to COVID. So we are working with a plan. I'll be working, setting up Zoom meetings with grades 2, 3, 4, 5 next week. I just can't brag enough about our K-1 teachers and the planning and the questions and the specialists that have been happening over the last three weeks. They're just doing an outstanding job in problem solving, and they do want our students back in person. And we also know that we also have to plan for online, and I'll show you some information that we've collected from our K-1 parents in just a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Is this something that the board has to approve, this plan?
I would like you to approve the plan.
So is this something that if?
It's not necessarily a plan, I'm sorry, Amanda, but more of a document that we can operate by.
So if the board happens to be comfortable with this tonight, is that something that would be helpful to move to an action item? So that if, once we do get that recommendation from the Department of Health, that it expedites the ability for the district to start using this or, you know, activating this or whatever?
Yeah, we don't need to move it. We have plans. We're working on each stage planning right now. So we're going to continue to make those plans as if this would be approved, but you do not have to move it to an action item tonight.
But if we get a, okay, say, from Mr. Henderson, say, Friday or Monday, and if we haven't approved it, can you put it into action anyway?
We would, it would take us two weeks to bring the first batch of students in, which would.
Correct.
That's school board meeting, which you can approve it then, and we're in good shape to go.
Oh, in my opinion, the sooner the better. These kids just have to get back into schools, as far as I'm concerned.
But the lower, sorry, Susan, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's all right.
With the lower grades, you know, I'm not sure that everyone's going to want to come back. And so are you anticipating a lot of disruption, moving classes? Or like, how are we going to deal with the transition if people aren't comfortable coming back?
Yeah, I'm going to show a slide on that, and we will. And we do have a number of parents that have indicated they want online for the rest of the year. So we will have to adjust some classes. And so we're in the process of taking a look at those and talking with staff that might be interested or may need to teach online due to health, so.
But we don't anticipate it being a huge labor crunch, so to speak, if we have to man both, you know, person, both in-class courses and also online virtual spaces?
Elementary, elementary or not, is worried about secondary is going to be an issue. Going to be very, very difficult. But elementary, I think we have a very solid plan, and I think we will be able to work out classes to do both online and in-person.
Well, I know, just, I've been looking around and listening to other people's experiences, and I just, I think the confidence level, you know, people in Pullman is going to be very important. So if we don't screw up the first few grades, you know, maybe by the time we get to middle school and high school, people will be comfortable enough to come back, you know what I mean? So, no, I think that that sounds good if we're planned in the front end.
That is our plan.
Great. Another question is, has the WIAA always been imposing rules too? Or is this just a recent thing, that recent document where they're saying you may not do band, where you can do band practice with percussion and strings, but not any instruments? but not, not any instruments that you blow into or no singing required and the W I A A says you can't do that? Are these all fairly recent?
Well, some of these are recent due to the health implications of those activities. So they, with the Department of Health, but W I A has always had guidelines and rules and regulations for activities and sports. So again, they've been working in consultation and as things change, you know, I expect some other guidance may come out in the future. But again, a lot of this is different because there are a lot of safety implications with some activities such as singing or high contact sports.
Okay. I just, it's all of a sudden, what are they doing? Everybody has to have a say, I guess. All right, I'm sorry, carry on.
There we go. So we did survey all of our K one parents. We had a great response. You've noticed though, in the grade, that we did not get response from fourteen kindergarten families and eighteen first grade. But you can see the green, Courtney, is that right?
It's in person.
In person and then the, what color is that, Courtney?
Red.
Red, thank you, is distance learning. So you can see right now, we have twenty-four kindergartners. It's it's with that, we'll elect to go to distance learning and thirty-four in first grade. So you can see right there that a little, it's about three classes right there. That'll be online distance learning. Which will shuffle some students around.
I'm curious about the non-response families. Is there any correlation with those families and their students not being active in the distance learning currently? Or is that just maybe undecided or just we haven't gotten in touch with them yet?
Mainly, we just weren't able to get in touch. We've done at least two emails, maybe three, and in each school also did phone calls. And even with that, we could not get a response. I don't know if they're actively engaged in any which way, shape or form at this point.
And Bob, are we still planning on making people opt in or out? Like basically, once we decide to reopen, if people decide they're going online, is that their decision for the year? Or are we allowing flexibility as the situation kind of pans?
We've put it out as the semester as a minimum, most, more likely probably the year. We may be able to bring some back at semester if there's space available.
Okay, so is there a application process or, I mean, is there?
It's going to be a very simple one-page enrollment.
Okay, and I I just want to make sure that it's not super confusing because I know everything is kind of ad hoc right now. And so I just, you know, we're communicating these things to people that decide to opt out.
And it was, it was communicated in the survey that went out that if you selected online and distance learning, you would do that at a minimum for the semester, but more likely for the year.
Thank you very much, Bob.
Yeah, you're welcome. Good. And we'll be doing a similar survey with two, three and four, five. So we know exactly what the staffing will will need to look like.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. So just some general information. I'm not going to read all this because I know you've seen it in the packet. But from the community Zoom meeting, one of the, I tried to include some important pieces that were of interest from the questions during the community Zoom. So again, online will be available for all elementary families. We're currently exploring for secondary. Secondary is very, very difficult to do given the number of different classes and that many secondary students are not all just taking sixth grade, seventh, eighth, ninth and tenth grade classes. They're a mix. So again, it'll be a semester, a year-long commitment. Obviously, with a dedicated teacher to be more synchronous instruction, students will likely be assigned to a new teacher and with new classmates from across the district for the online. We call it a slow start, so being in two smaller groups for a few days to teach those safety routines before the whole class attends together. Phasing will be K one, two, three, four, five. If COVID goes up and Whitman County decides that, well, you know, we're going to change our mind, my direction would be whatever phase we're in. We keep those students there, but we don't add the next two grade levels till it's safe to do so. Okay?
Bob, may I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Do you, do you anticipate, given that you said there was like, say, three kindergarten classes, right, that wouldn't be coming back? Are we going to pick one building that just doesn't have kindergarten? Are we going to be moving a lot of students around in buildings to? Because I'm just wondering, like, what if twelve from Cami at kindergarten classes opt out, but only two from Sunnyside? Like, we still have to have the same amount of teachers at Sunnyside unless we move students around, like? Can you elaborate on how, you know, what we're doing to avoid disruptions? Because I know especially at the lower grades, you know, the teacher relationship is very important.
So we're trying to minimize those disruptions as most, as much as possible. So obviously, if they're choosing to go online, that's going to be, there'll be an online teacher with students from each of the four elementaries in the class, online class. The students at each school, some of the students may move to another teacher within that building. Our goal is not to shift kids to a new building, but just to a new teacher in that building. So that's our plan.
Thank you, Bob. I was just wondering about the the planning process, I think.
Yeah, and we're working on that and tomorrow, actually, each elementary school is meeting to continue to have those conversations, problem solve. So we're working on those. Now that we have the numbers, we can move forward with the model and what that's going to look like. Okay, next slide. So again, this is a potential transition schedule. So this is, would be a K one. So Monday, half the class would come for a full day. Tuesday, the other half of the class would come for a full day. Again, teaching those transitions, safety measures, doing the attestation, washing their hands, six feet apart. How do you do recess? How do you eat lunch? How do you transition? Then Wednesday, there'd be no students in person. They'd be preparing their class to receive all students. Again, to practice again, group A on Thursday, group B on Friday. That following Monday, then we'd have all the students in full-time, all students all day for K one. So that's kind of the transition model. That's one of the ones we've looked at. There's another slightly different version, which went A, B, A, B, and then full on Friday, but that really doesn't give the teacher time to set up any particular changes they may need to make to the class. So that's why we're offering that Wednesday as an asynchronous day or a day where students are working on some independent activities. So the teachers can, specialists can prepare for the following week.
And Bob, I have two questions. One on the attestations. How are we like logistically organizing those and also policing them to make sure people are attesting when they come to school? Is it online? Is it, is it as they walk in the door? Could you share a little bit on that?
Yeah, so the attestation will be done online through Skyward. The building office will print off a report at eight a.m. Any students that have not done that attestation when they come to school will be checked, temperature checked and go through the attestation. I've talked to two school districts very, well, one similar to us that are using this and one's a little larger, Port Townsend and Moses Lake. After the first couple of days, parents get into the routine and the number of students not filling out that attestation prior to school drops dramatically. But they both reported it works very, very well after, yeah, after a little bit of adjustment. But all schools, all students will have an attestation done. And those who don't have it done when they show up, and we're going to do that with all schools, we'll run a report. And if it's a high school or middle school, when they are back, we'll run a zero period report and then we'll run a first period report.
Thank you, Bob. And one further question, you kind of answered it there, but are we doing any screening activities in addition to the attestation?
Yeah, so with the attestation, we will also have a temperature screening equipment at each school. So it's the kind that you just walk up, it'll flash red or green. You can go on. If we do see a student that may indicate or show symptoms, we will take those students aside and do a temperature check and attestation again with that particular student if they're showing signs or symptoms.
So this is just a personal comment. We may want to put out a, like, once we've decided to reopen, like, so I would say not right now, but like, once we've been given the go-ahead in that two-week window, we may want to communicate out to parents, especially those coming back, the, the, not only the attestation process, but what we're doing to keep their kids safe. You know, like what we're doing for screening, what we're doing for practices, what we're doing. I'm just trying to, I'm concerned about confidence.
Sure, absolutely. And so I'm going to, I think a couple of slides, I'll hit on that a little bit. We're also going to be in the process of making some videos similar to what Spokane has done. So again, also with the Skyward attestation, that communication will go out along with screenshots, also be able to do it via phone. So it's going to be pretty user-friendly. So again, we want to make sure that we're covering all those areas and questions. And you'll see in a couple more slides, things that address comments that came up in questions during that Zoom meeting.
Thanks, Bob. I'll let you finish now.
Thank you.
I have, I have a quick question. So since basically every thing is a COVID symptom, sniffly nose, a little bit of cough, fever, are we expecting there to be attendance, absence issues? If we're asking students to stay home if they have symptoms?
It's, that's, that's one of the biggest conversations that superintendents had last week and I'll be having tomorrow with superintendents in E S D one-on-one, which is fifty-nine school districts, which many of them are already in full person, in-person mode. Very, very difficult because there's very little. I think there's one symptom difference between the two, but we just received a new decision matrix with what they're calling minor or major symptoms. I'm not sure. I might be wrong, but I'll show you this slide coming up at the end, Amanda. So it's kind of gives us a little bit more guidance on what do we do with those symptoms. But I expect, once we have sniffles or cough, you know, we're going to ask them to stay home.
Which is going to be a lot of kids going into winter time. It's just inevitable.
It's inevitable and I don't, I don't foresee any other way around it. So again, in person, the reason we'll have those A, B days is to practice, you know, and teach routines to build that sense of security. There'll be assigned seating. There will be some flexible seating options for physical movement. We're identifying, you know, a special place in the classroom for those students that might need a quiet space. We're going to use outdoor areas for learning as much as possible and weather permits. Health and safety protocols, I think Nathan mentioned this. So again, they'll be required to do that daily wellness screener. Masks are going to be required for all staff and students. There'll be opportunities to take a break from wearing a mask. Face coverings, they just sent out new guidelines on those, so reusable face coverings, surgical masks. We're not going to allow the neck gaiters because they are deemed less, less, the least efficient as far as particles. Students will be physically distanced, required to maintain those distancing practices in their cohorts to minimize crossover. Time will be provided for them to wash their hands several times a day, as outlined in our plan. We will provide transportation. We also did a survey, during that survey with K one, how many parents would require school transportation? It's a very small number as compared to normal, a normal year. But we also are encouraging families to take their children to and from school, have them walk or bike if that's possible. And again, that's just to help with the physical distancing and safety. We will have health and isolation rooms that are designated where if we do have a student or staff member that's experiencing COVID symptoms, where they would be safe until they can go home or someone can pick them up to take them home. And we'll have more detailed pieces of information to each of these that will be posted on the website as well.
Bob, I'm sorry to interrupt you again. I know I promised to let you finish. The, what do we plan on to do with students who refuse to follow any of the protocols? Like wearing a mask or, you know, social distancing?
It'll be, it'd be no different than when they're refusing to follow directions and that, then we're going to have conversation. We're going to have them isolated, have a parent conference so we can, we'll help that student understand that importance of that. What I'm hearing from my colleagues is that's not really an issue or a very small issue with a few, few students. And there might be the option of they may need to wear a face shield. But there are some students that may have a medical exemption as well, but there, we have face shields for them as well.
Thank you.
Next. So social emotional learning, this is really important. So in our reopening plan, we have the social academic emotional behavior risk screener, Sabers, that will be administered administered to all students. The results will be reviewed by building teams for further action and support. We also have lessons, second step curriculum. And our counselors have, there's virtual calming spaces. I think I shared one of those probably two, three weeks back. And we'll continue to meet with students as needed. Again, responding to potential confirmed cases. So again, we have protocols in place that would include contact tracing, notifications would go out. We have standard letters that have been developed by not only the school district, but by Whitman County Department of Health. And so we'll be transparent, but privacy will also be recognized as well. So we will not be releasing names. But we will, people will receive a letter that need to receive a letter if they were in close contact or a particular class. This is what I was alluding to, Amanda, with the student sick exclusion return algorithm. So there's higher risk symptoms and lower risk symptoms. And then there's kind of the scenarios at the bottom. This just came out. I know it's dated ten, twelve, but we just received it today or yesterday. So again, if you have one low-risk system, no close contact, you can return to school twenty-four hours after symptom resolution or symptom determined to be caught by other condition. Two or more, this is to try to help with those flu-like symptoms versus COVID. But again, it's, it's much simpler to read. If you look at, in our reopening plan, we have like four different diagrams like this. We've replaced all four of those with this one. It's much easier to read. It's much more straightforward. And literally, this just came out on, on ten, twelve. Again, I want to highlight that we are doing a lot of things to try to engage students and also continue to have students remain in school, engaged. So we have clubs and activities and virtual coaching included. So there is a link to a variety of clubs and activities that have started. Not all of them have started, but there's at least probably a dozen, I would say, at the high school that have started. So again, plenty of activities for students to engage in. We also started virtual coaching, as you can see volleyball through drama in anticipation of hopefully getting to in-person when students are back in school. Again, elementary schools are offering a variety of activities. Cougar tutors is starting to be formed right now in all schools, Green Team, Castle Council and more. It varies at the elementary. They're still just trying to get things up and going. Lincoln Middle School is offering A S P activities such as yearbook. And they have virtual coaching started in four different sports right now. I just wanted to put this in because this is new as of October sixth. So the governor's office, and I put this in, that informed the W I A that these guidelines must be followed. Neither schools nor community sports programs have the authority to implement more lenient policies. That's a pretty heavy statement and I wanted to make sure that I included that, that's straight off the guide. That guideline is probably about fifty pages. It provides guidelines for just about every sport and activity. They did come out with a band choir clarification. So band is right now limited to percussion and string instruments only with physical distancing, at least a cloth face covering at all times. Choir is basically not permitted unless it's in a remote setting with no other people outside the immediate household. So again, singing and choir is not going to be happening, but we will be doing at least theory and trying to come up with some other activities to meet those Department of Health safety guidelines. And I will just say the work continues, it's never ending. And we're looking forward to continuing to collaborate, problem solve, so we can get our students back in person in some setting or some type of schedule.
Thank you. And then I have calls from people about, especially some of the parents who have their kids out in the far reaches of our district and their internet is poor. And they they're just experiencing lots of frustration, three kids having to share bad internet, it's not working. And I know we talked about this yesterday, but there are accommodations. Have they been made for the middle school as well, for students to be able to come in and use the district emails? And you do you have places set up for them?
Yes, we do. So at all, at all levels, we have we have about twenty hotspots that have been deployed out in the county for families that had no internet connectivity. We do have some families that even with a hotspot, it does not work. So we are bringing in those students on average, two days a week, setting them up in the school so they can access on their online classes. They're in a school setting. So if someone is experiencing difficulty connecting or does not have access, please contact your individual school and contact the building principal. And we will work on trying to give you support and access to technology.
And can the rural kids use the buses too to come in?
We do have bus routes that will be changing, but we do have bus routes available and pickup available. The times will have to work around the schedules for the busing, but we do have busing available for those students.
And then what kind of things are offered for students who are just struggling with this darn virtual learning? There's some that just they just can't do it. Do we have accommodations for them?
Well, they definitely have office hours with the teachers, so they can definitely contact the teachers. We also, if they're they're struggling, again, contact their individual school. We can work to see what things that they may need that we could do to help them with that virtual learning barrier or challenge.
Again, there just some kids, well, you know, some kids get so lost, they don't even know what they don't know. They don't know how to ask a question because they don't know what the question should be to get the answer they need.
Yeah, and again, when they run into that situation, like, all of our teachers are offering office hours and they have that. So please take advantage of that and contact their individual school teacher, and they'll be happy to help them.
Okay, and if they're afraid to call their teacher, they can have the parent call the school to find out what's going on or something. I just I just want to be able to know everybody to know that every single kid, there's there's a way for them that to help for them around. But please feel free, we don't know if they're having trouble, but if they are having trouble, parent, somebody, kids, reach out, because there are accommodations being made.
Absolutely.
And you said something about that, like, they have like a study space or something at the high school.
Yeah, most of our students that do not have internet access, what we have done is open the auxiliary gym, and we have tables spaced out way more than six feet. And they can come there, set up and do their work at those individual tables.
Great, all right. So everybody, hopefully, will take advantage of those things because we don't want any kids to be struggling. And we we want our kids to get back into school as soon as possible. So there, all right, we have another item on on our agenda. If there are any other questions for Dr. Maxwell on reopening.
Bob, when is our, Bob, when's your next meeting with Troy?
My next meeting with Troy is Tuesday.
Oh, wow, okay.
But I'm in contact with him a lot. So we emailed back and forth today as a matter of fact. But we have a standing meeting on Tuesday where either myself, Joe or Roberta attend.
Bob, are we offering testing, COVID testing to employees in any capacity?
We are not, but I am I am working on a way that they could access COVID testing. What we're trying to work out now is to figure out, depending on what their insurance would be, whether they'd have out of pocket cost or not. But we're working on a plan where they would not have to get a doctor's note to get a rapid test.
Yeah, again, the just the confidence, you know, I think just having them available, you know, and telling people they can take them, peace of mind, really.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, we'll go on to our next item for discussion. And this is policy thirty one twenty two, excuse it, unexcused absences. And I know we kind of discussed this a little bit, but there were some questions, so here we are.
Thank you, Susan. So policy thirty one twenty two has been resumed in September, policy alert. It's basically been revised significantly to reflect the emergency rules that have been adopted by the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction and defines absences in the context of remote instruction and daily attendance. The revisions include just an expanded list of excused absences categories specific to COVID, non-truancy absent codes, and addresses a tiered form for students. A lot of this is verbatim because of the emergency rules and laws as recommendations. We did get a question regarding the reference dates of October, basically fourth and fifth. That's when the emergency rule kicks in for coding of truancy. And since that's already passed and we're now just talking about making this a policy, many times, emergency rules are put into place prior to us even getting an example laws of policy, which sometimes comes two, three, four weeks later or longer. So again, what's a possible outcome of that? Again, in worst case scenario, this would give us a little bit of flexibility about seven days. But we do have to code those differently, but we may not have to exactly go to truancy right off the bat. So again, it's a hard question to answer thoroughly because emergency rules are in place and become effective on that date prior to us. Having them in a policy procedure, but I believe they're still in effect, if that makes sense, regardless if we have a policy or procedure passed on that. So that's that's the best I can come up with right now on that particular question.
So any other questions on this? As it is a discussion item, I recommend that we all read it over and see if we have questions and reach out to Bob prior to the next meeting if there are any concerns. Okay.
I'm sure we'll probably see changes to this one anyway.
Yeah. Chances are good. All right, and no executive session?
Unless you'd like one, no.
No, thank you, you know.
I can't have one because we don't have one scheduled.
I so appreciate the offer, but no, well, well, we do have informational items attached to our agenda. Recommend y'all check that out. That's the administrative requirements voucher voucher audit and the community update schedule, board calendar procedures for the unexcused and the policy we just talked about thirty one twenty two P. And then there's a thirty two oh five P sexual harassment of students prohibited procedure as well. And then there finally the reminder of our Pullman promise. So there we are. And I will now entertain and motion to a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, yay. Thank you. It's been moved to say that we adjourn all in favor of thumbs up. See, everybody's still awake. Well done. All right, thank you. The meeting is over.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night. Good night.
Good night. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Diane.